All righty, it is seven P M. I will call this Thursday, March sixth, twenty twenty five. Village Board Meeting to Order. The first item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. And to those that are on Zoom, hopefully you guys can all hear us. Looks like we have uh two people, one of which is a presenter, and then one of which, I'm not sure who that is, but it looks like his name is Steve, so welcome. And thanks for being here to listen tonight. Um if the clerk could call the roll.
Trustee Eifert. Trustee Frank. Trustee Abedman.
Here.
President Gerke.
Here.
Trustee Dorward.
Here.
Trustee Bart.
Here.
Trustee Miley.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, seeing as that we have a core and we will move on. The next item on the agenda is for public comments. This has to do with anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So if you have any comment for anything that is not listed on the agenda, um please state your name, stand, state your name, let the clerk know who you are. And also, if you are on Zoom, same thing, if you wouldn't mind, if you have something to speak on, on this um in this meeting, please state your name before you start speaking and we will hear you. Um we do have, we are limiting it to five minutes per person, so if there are any public comments, I invite you to stand now. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is consists of the approval of the minutes of the February twentieth, twenty twenty five Village Board Meeting, and approving general fund, water, and sewer invoices, and I do not believe there are any additional bills.
They make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're gonna move on to report on village committees. The first one uh was the Ferdonia uh Planning Commission meeting that we had, it was on March third. Um we had a couple of different things. Uh the the first one was a discussion and possible action on the P W S B Splash Zone Site Plan. Uh that was pretty straightforward. We took a look, um we took a look through that and kind of took a look at what was going to be placed where, how the whole site was gonna work out, uh parking, parking lot, paving, or got a couple of good questions on that, and that ended up passing um unanimously, which was great. And then after that, we also took a look at the sign for Precision Floor Decor, I believe it was. The the building that is on Highland Avenue that also faces Highway fifty seven, we approved their sign that was um presented to us, which is pretty much just black lettering that kind of faces towards the road. Uh it's kind of like a decal, it looks really sharp, so they're planning on starting their operations, I believe they said next month, possibly in May, something like that, so we're looking forward to having them here as well. Are there any questions of the Planning Commission? If not, we'll move on to the Parks and Rector.
All right, so a couple of things happened since our last meeting. We had our winter walk uh on Saturday, February twenty first, first. Um it was fantabulous. Um we had quite a turnout, there was over fifty people there, I would say, um which was way better than we anticipated and a huge increase from last year. Um we even got some donations, which was fantastic. And we had a lot of positive feedback from that, so we hope to continue this uh year over year. And thank you, I know he's not here, but our D P W crew for helping us out with the cleanup. Uh that helped tremendously and it was really good. We had a good team for setup, it went quicker than it did the year before. Um but it was pretty good, so very happy with the turnout and thank you everybody for coming and supporting that. Uh next, we had last week an opens and sorry, parks and open space community listening session. Um I was able to present to uh citizens within the village. We had a good turnout there as well. Uh almost twenty people came to the listening session was, which was really good. We talked a lot about the things at the parks, how we envision the parks going in the next five to ten years, um a lot of different ideas. How do we make our parks better for our community and what does that look like? Um there was a lot of great ideas. A couple of the main points was uh lighting at Freedom Park, so uh Administrator Jenkins is starting to look into that for me. Um other things, we're making our parker parks safer. Updating our equipment to be more inclusive, not only for the disabled, but for also older kids. Um our parks tend to gear towards younger generation, so how do we make that inclusive for all of our our kids in the community? Um and then continuing to look at shelters at the parks, bathrooms at the parks, things like that, so uh overall, it was a really good discussion. Um there was a lot of great ideas that have been put out there. Uh I provided Administrator Jenkins with the recap and we are gonna start putting together our planning book from here, so. Thank you everybody for coming out to that. It was, it was great to see so many people there.
Are there any questions of our chairperson for parks? Thank you very much for that update, I appreciate it, and thank you for holding that meeting, the the parks meeting, the open parks meeting, that was uh was awesome that you stepped up and you were able to do that, so thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah.
All right. If there are no other questions, we're gonna move on for items for discussion and or action. Before we get too far into that, I just wanted to kind of remind the board, uh in the last couple meetings, we've had a couple of instances where I feel like maybe things have gotten a little bit uh heated, which is okay, that's why we are here, we're a board of seven. We all have different opinions and we're all able and, you know, supposed to express those opinions. I would say that I do wanna continue to follow follow uh Robert's rules when we are doing this, so if you guys have something that you want to say on this partic- particular topic, please adjust, address me, the chairperson, uh when you are discussing that, everybody will have a say in what we are talking about. Um once everybody has their opportunity to go through and have their say on something, we can then again go back through and everyone can have a second say. After that, we uh will cease discussion and vote on what we're going to be doing. Um I do not want comments to be directed at other members of this body, they should be directed directly to me. So that's how we're gonna move forward, and uh just again, wanted that little reminder for everybody. So uh without further ado, uh the first item is a motion to approve utility account write offs, and I'm gonna let our treasurer, Julie, talk a little bit about this one.
So last month, after doing the first round of late bill late fees, there was some, it was noticed that there there was an inactive account that must have that mailed out with the postcards that we did, so taking a look at the inactive accounts only as to what had balances, and that's what was presented in there. There's five ones that I highlighted paid that were actually bankruptcies from many years ago that still have balances. So those definitely should have been written off many years ago. Um so wanna get those cleaned off as well as all these other little, you know, tiny amounts on accounts that, you know, are part of all the inactive accounts, so just wanna get this listing all cleaned up so that, you know, going forward, um hopefully on an annual basis, you know, close to the end of the year, we can take a look at, you know, if there's anything out there, you know, like like right before like tax rules go out and all that kind of stuff to make sure that these inactive accounts are, you know, nice and clean and not messy.
This is something that we've been going through for the last few years, if everybody remembers, uh we've had these for quite a few years, some of them going back. Um I think this is the right time to do it, especially as Julie is stepping into her role brand new, let's have a clean slate and move forward would be my recommendation. Not that it means much.
I'm making motion to approve the utility uh utility account write offs.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Are there any comments or questions from the board? All right, if not, I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Uh next, we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh one contributing to truancy. Uh this is, was brought before us last time uh by our marshal to uh upgrade our ordinance basically and bring it in lines uh with what the state is is recommending. I, do you want to go over it a little bit or anything, but it's it's written the exact same way that we had it, there were no comments or your input from anybody on the board, so it is what we saw last time as well.
I believe there may have been changes uh since we discussed this a few weeks ago. Uh what the circumstances still are, are what they are and uh
Mm-hmm.
Um again, I think we're still requesting a request, they disapprove of this change.
Absolutely.
They make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one contributing to true truancy.
A second.
They have a motion, I have a second. Are there any questions, concerns? All right, if not, we'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. All right, and then we have introduction to ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh two. This is pertaining to the maintenance of public utility services. Uh would you like to take this one?
I can speak on this. Um so as we've been developing the industrial park, and those that are familiar with the grading and site plan out there, uh the grading moves from the north is the high point, and then as you go to the south, it's the low point. And so that was graded on purpose, planned that way, utilities are planned that way. Regardless, we ran into now that developers are coming in and builders are questioning and talking to us. Um there are some points uh depending on the lot where it makes it difficult for a private property owner to connect to our utilities or connect to the sewer main. So the answer to that is is lift station, so not a giant, you know, million dollar lift station, but smaller, they're called E one lift stations that we're able to install within either the public right of way or within the easement to help lift up the effluent right from a private property owner to um our system. So we're fine with installing that and moving forward. The question that's before you is regards to the liability of those units. So right now ordinances do not touch on that, on, you know, who would be responsible, what if there's a backup in the lateral, right? Does that fall out to us as the, as a public utility? Does it fall to the pri- private property owner? Um so we worked with our D P W director, our attorney, and our engineer to craft language that clearly spells out what is the line for the liability for the private property owner who's who is pumping to us? And then what is that liability on us? And so pretty much act like any other lateral system, right? Anything that's in the right of way or easement that we maintain is on us. And then if it's a backup anywhere else in the private property, just like on your homes, right? It would be on you. And so it's just spelling that out with this unique situation that we're that we're gonna be using in the industrial park, that that's gonna be the same language and the way that we would apply anywhere else, so. This is the first time it's before you, and then assuming that you guys wanna give your feedback, then it'll be back before you for approval at the next meeting.
Um I think it's going to be more like an inspection role and um than a than a um enforcement.
Um I guess I don't know.
You got that deeper expect, that inspection manual that we can sync uh a little force main job in there and push it up to the.
Yeah, so there'll be those, I forget what they're called, um not lookout points, but what's the term Eric used?
Um cleanouts?
Cleanouts, thank you, yep. So there will be those, right, so that way we can inspect, do those inspections where those are installed. Um to make sure that, you know, if something's backed up, we can look at the clean out and make sure that, did it happen before, right, it came into our system or after, so, yep.
So then the the uh the actual description um of uh lift station is we're gonna put an actual lift station in?
Well, it is a lift station, but it's a, it's a regional one for a small area, they're smaller size, they only take maybe one or two properties at a time. It's not like a giant lift station. Um and I know that President Gerke was looking into that a little bit more with us too. Um I don't know if there's a better explanation for it.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, it's essentially correct. It's like a little mini lift station, well, we're for a group of properties, yeah, so we're having um a little bit of an issue with some of the sewers, the sewer laterals, the way the engineering was done, and the way we approved it, some of them were only buried two feet underground at the um south end of the property, and so that's just not, you know, it's it's not feasible, so this is what we have to do to try to mitigate that, but it's only a few properties. Um rather than say like a whole subdivision or, you know, a whole
Yeah.
a whole industrial park, it's just a few properties.
First and uh dance.
Well, Laura doesn't have sewer service. It's, she doesn't have utility, so it'd be the dance, and I think there's one across the street possibly, and one, the one directly to the north of the dance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So again, this language just allows us then, as we do this on a case by case basis, we have that protection, you know, for the village.
Yeah, exactly, because those properties are in our sewer district that we have to serve them. We can't start decide to serve, well, not this one, and they just want to have water. I I doubt if David will allow us to do that.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Yep.
Um is it, is it possible for us to go down far enough to serve uh Bobby still the house in the corner?
I don't know if the sewer is extending all the way down there, I think it's stopping at that last property uh to the west.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the water is going around, but the sewer is only going to that last property. Yep.
Is it safe to assume that we're gonna see a change order in the coming weeks for adding these?
Possible, yep. No, because cruise checks coming back anyway, yeah.
Yeah, we only had one that I can Chris's friends with their uh traffic system, buy it on, and rather than build a new one, they just annex to the village and carry and put a battle through in between the property.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Could you define a a few properties? Like how many?
Like, like two, two or three.
Two or three.
Okay, yep.
Yep. But yeah, as uh Trustee Bart said that, you know, we'll have those change orders and things like that when the time comes. This right now is just that that uh introduction to the ordinance that clarifies what that maintenance of that pu- public utility looks like. Good.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or concerns? Again, any questions that anybody would have, um you know, please forward on to staff. This will be taken up for adoption at our next board meeting, and uh we'll take a look at that there. We look forward to any changes or uh or not that there might be, and then we'll take it up then.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. We will move on uh to item D, which is a motion to approve Strand Task Order twenty five dash oh one uh wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Um I guess who who wants to kind of do a a review and then?
Why don't you give a quick summary and then I'll cut it off to my friends that are here as well. Um so we last talked about the wastewater treatment plant upgrade at the end of January, if you remember, we came with a list of kind of all of the things that we're gonna be looking at for the wastewater treatment plant. On the majority of the board, I gave us clear direction to really just worry about those high priority items and to create a plan to get things going in this direction while this board is still in place. Um so what we've came back with is uh a lot of information here, but we'll try to simplify it as much as possible. Um you'll see a simplified version of that sheet that I gave you in January, that now shows just those priority projects uh plus the replacement of the mechanical screen that was decided to get added in as well. So these were based off of those original estimates of cost. Those equaled about five point six million when you add all of them together. And then down at the bottom, you see the same breakdown I gave you at that meeting where you see our forgiveness that we get through the uh to through the water loan program, through the P S C. Uh then you would see the average annual dollar increase if we did all of that together. And then you see it broken down by per quarter and per month, but remember, the appetite of the board was, you know, we don't wanna jack up our rates by eighty percent all in one year, let's phase it out. Um so you see that that recommended phasing then, it's that twenty one, twenty four, and twenty three. The only change in these numbers since we last talked, uh and Lisa can expand on it later, which she gets into her presentation, is before uh Strand was using our twenty twenty four numbers, and now they've incorporated our twenty twenty five numbers. And so as you can imagine, I I think Trustee Frank said this very well, our costs are only gonna go up year after year. And so we felt that it was more accurate to use our twenty twenty five budgeted numbers just to show that these are our current costs, or at least our planned costs right now. And we should add whatever rate increase we're gonna do based off our our costs that we have planned. Um so all of that is there for you to look at. What um Phil with Strand is gonna present to you is again just an overview of what these set upgrades are gonna be. At the end of his presentation, you'll see a breakdown of these numbers in a different way with truly just those those uh priority projects that equals about three point some million dollars. And then you'll see that we've added bid alternates for all these other items. And the reason that we did that is because we're not gonna go out to bid and for two, three years from now, we don't know what these costs are gonna be, right? And so by us adding in all these alternates together, that'll, that'll allow us and that board at the time to kind of see all of the options that we have, and they can kind of pick and choose of what they could afford and what they're really gonna be borrowing at that time. Um and then the final thing I'll add with, because we don't know what is gonna be coming, we are actually not recommending, and you'll see the resolution later, we're not recommending necessarily you guys set the rates for the next three years. We're recommending you only look at uh this year and next year. And that is because there's so much unknown with costs come year three that really that board at that time, when they're preparing to borrow X amount of dollars, they should make that decision of what that amount's going to be, as they have more details of what the bids are gonna come in at and what projects that that board wants to do. So I hope that you can leave tonight at least feeling like you have a little bit more information and we can set things and the path that we can hire Strand to do their task order, work on this bid package over the next year and the and the engineering that goes with it. And then by resolution, you'll kind of set us in the path to ramp up our rates for a potential bar and whatever that ends up being, so. So I'll end it on that, and then I believe Strand was gonna go first.
Chris, uh yeah, a question before we go into this, so what happened to the twenty percent this year and the twenty percent next year? And then the twenty percent uh the year after that? Went up to twenty one percent, twenty four percent, twenty three percent.
Yep, so that includes the twenty twenty five numbers now, so before the, and L R's can talk about that a little bit later, Lisa can clarify. But they had used our twenty twenty four numbers when they developed, developed that plan last time. Now they're using twenty twenty five numbers plus all of the projects that were, that the board had and moved forward with. So hopefully, like I said, Lisa will be explaining next, and she can kind of break down that number of how she got to that percentage.
So those twenty percent numbers weren't for real, we just, we just raised it a little bit more.
They were based off of the twenty twenty four uh final, final numbers.
Well, I didn't know that was gonna happen, and then so this uh plan that he's presenting, this is something that he's going to hand to bidders then, and then they're gonna make a a bid to us as based on what he says here, or?
So he's gonna, so he'll talk about, he'll talk through this, but he'll create the engineering plans for this entire operation and then a bid package, so you're right, we'll go out to bid. So at his example, I think like the garage you said was two hundred and thirty thousand, right? That could, that could come back to us in ninety, right? And that would mean that it's gonna be a lower cost. And so that's the reason why in that third year, we don't want you to set what that percentage is gonna be, because you're right, bids might come in lower.
So this, but this is basically, basically gonna be a blueprint plan for bidders when they?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna need that technical advice in order to?
Okay.
You're correct. Yep.
That's kind of planning how we did, since some of the project could be installed a base bid. So that's in the project. One way to remove it is if you change order that way, and then there's bid alternatives that they would provide a price for, and then you you can decide if it's worth it, that alternative, and if maybe the garage comes in really high, we could have a little cheaper, so that's not important, that, so I'll go through it, but that's how we plan to set it up to give you guys max flexibility, so you know, the rate impact can be adjusted to let you guys see that at the time. Feel free to interrupt me. Um so a quick agenda, just gonna kind of refresh everybody's memory on what the proposed upgrades are with estimated cost and then the overall schedule. Uh so proposed upgrades, lot of information, this is, we went through this last time, you know, a lot more detail. The, everything that's, this darker gray the even proposed were, um so convert primary filter fire digestors, duration basins. That part along with the clarifier is what we're calling the base bid. The whole onion goes out separately, it would be really difficult, so we'll put that in a separate bid alternative. It would be a standalone project, almost difficult, if all those items are very intertwined together, so you have multiple different designs, it wouldn't be easy to do, um whereas like the chemical foster swimming building is here, it's more of a separated process. That one's fairly easy to be there, included in the project or removed from the project, and there's a pretty, you know, defined line. The final clarifier, existing final clarifier improvements in these tanks, again, that's another one that's pretty easy to find. So you could include it, price is coming well, and then you could eliminate it, uh if it, you know, comes in above budget. Replace mechanical screen, upgrade screen and room, dumpster room to current standards. It's here, so again, that's another one that's had standalone, it's easy to view as a bid alternative. Um then standby generator and garage were something that um Eric had asked me to add just as bid alternatives uh recently, so we've added that in, so standby generator is spot that we're, just right now, we've got uh bits for it, and then the garage of on the north side of the site. So everything that has the base bid, that would be what would be absolutely included in the project. And then everything, bid alternative, be fully designed, and then you get a price, and then you could have a pick and choose after it's came in, if you wanted to include that part of the project or not. Sense to everybody? Uh so then costs. So here's what we're calling the base bid items. So that's three point two million, what our estimated construction cost is, and that's inflated to this end of next year, so basically add five percent to our cost for the comp inflation for next year. And then bid alternatives are these five items, so these are all more standalone projects. Could be chosen for good or not. So here's total, I guess this is inflated, it's inflated down here, so these two add up to the six point seven, and then five percent be that number. So that number is more, I know, than what others are planning for, what rates are playing for, so that's where this would come into play, where it can choose to get to whatever number you want it to be. Sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm. Dale, could I just have you touch on the mechanical screen? So when this body looked at that, remember, it was just that one ten number? And then you had a little asterix that that threw us off, so why don't you explain to them how you got to that? Obviously ten X number than what they looked at last.
Yes, the last that space is a very, um it's a space that's the roof is uh there's wooden, wooden structure for the roof, um with lights and stuff need to be brought up to code, ventilation needs to be brought up to code. Adjacent dumpster room also needs to be brought up to code, so there's a lot of other improvements that would go into it once you touch that screen that need to be brought, uh need to be completed, uh channels have to be modified. So a lot goes into that, um so that's where that everything comes from. Yeah, so it's just, it's a space where there's, it's a hazardous space, it's the very front of the plant. That's where all the sewer gas is gonna be, you know, in that sort of thing. So that would be proving all the electrical ventilation
And and then the only other change was uh the third one under the base bed, they add third, third final clarifier, so when we originally got estimates from you guys, it was one point eight million, and now you're showing one point five, which is obviously a good thing, so do you know? Oh, okay, okay.
This one too, I think it was nine hundred, now it's
Okay, okay.
Engineering is
Gotcha, gotcha. All right.
Or
Yeah, just wanna make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Yeah. No, we haven't.
This is just all the
No, no, this is full install, construction cost, yeah, final grading, yeah. But total project, the total construction.
Yes.
With engineering or not?
Without, this number does not, these numbers before were different.
Yeah.
No, that's all good.
Well, that's what we have in front of us is those different numbers, so.
Different. If they had, except why I screwed up on this one, this was a construction cost, only I didn't have engineering in last night. That was an error I made, and so that number is, you didn't change.
I had a question or thought to you, phosphorus removal building.
Is that something that we could have? A local contractor built? That we could have people come in and fit it once it's built? Install the equipment that we'll need.
Oh. That that's a brick, that don't have to be brick and block. If you want it to be brick and block, it's most of the chemical. So I don't know if that would be. Still set to be there for that sort of construction.
So you don't think we would save that much to have him built separately?
I think the garage would be a game event for something like that. You know, the garage, the contractors would put that and then. Could use, that's a little bit less evolved.
Yeah, and the standby generator, that's going to be a stationary unit?
Yes, that would be installed on a kind of creep pad. And near that you can take. Two hundred K W, the outdoor. Included with some sound attenuation. And that's one of those things too where we can talk about it and we'll pick a sound attenuated one, knowing that the parts there and everything. Or you will allow like that adds some cost. Some decisions that we can make.
I don't see anything in here for the actual lab. As we had spoken about the lab and the lab needs system needs that needs to be in a separate place and you know whatnot.
Yeah, there's nothing in here for the lab.
There is nothing in there for them. So we can kind of status call on that.
I believe we took that out. Remind me if I'm wrong administrator, but that was one of those alternative things along with the.
Yeah, that was the add break room office update. Yeah. That was more of a one than a D.
All right.
So then engineering design costs, I'll go through and how we develop the costs for these sorts of projects. We start by looking at similar projects that we designed. This project being. More of a retrofit fit and then interesting plant versus refill project. Pick projects that are more similar to that. We will get a number of sheets. Percent of construction cost or design. And then we come up with, we look at. One method here is the percent of construction cost. And eight point one percent. So eight point one percent is the average of these numbers. And this is based off of a construction cost of six point four million. That was previously I sent this to Chris. And Eric said we'd add the generator in the garage. So that's why that number is not a seven point seven number. So that's where that came from. And then the sheet count method is the other method. We take and we look at all the different sheets that ran down for the project. So this is the list that we put together. These are all the sheets we'll definitely need. It doesn't include anything for the generator and the garage yet. Just based on the previous. Previous scope. So we come up with sixty seven sheets. And then previous page, we had an average per sheet of about eight thousand dollars, which comes up. Five hundred and fifty five. We also need to do a facility plan to be in our requirement. And then it's had a group of utilities planned. So that we had an estimated twenty five thousand dollars. So here's five eighteen is based on percent of instruction. And then the sheet count method, this project being a little bit more of a retrofit. Projects, we felt that this might be a little low. So we went in between at five to twenty seven is the average of these two numbers. And then we arrived at a design fee five fifty two, we had twenty five to five twenty seven. And then we added the generator in the garage. The generators bought we actually had, we've done a lot of stand alone generator projects. This is off to the side and a relatively untouched area. So it's a fairly easy installation. And then the garage, we actually have on the grid project, we had a garage sled plan. We didn't have actual garage. So we have some work done running the garage sled. So this percentage is actually quite a bit lower if you do the the math. An additional six hundred thousand, it comes out five sixty nine five. Again, this would be time expense not to exceed. That's how we do all our contracts. We need to actually look back. We've had nine contracts that would be under. Our budget. So if we don't use this, you know, you don't get it back. So then it was illustrated the design fees for certain construction actions, except at seven point seven percent. This takes out facilities plan numbers. So that's from the five forty four. Five hundred comes from many cost per sheets actually. Down under seventy eight hundred per sheet. So that's how we developed our design.
And I'll just use a recent example. So with Wenzel, because we just talked about it, we had a not to exceed fifty thousand. We only ended up spending about twenty two on that. So he's he's true when he's saying that it's really just on a per hour basis. And yeah.
Time and expense not to exceed.
Yeah.
And I think we've been sort of the third year that not coming back with a bunch of amendments. Tell you it's going to cost. When the last thing is scheduled, so I put the project begins March seventeenth. Submit facilities plan to T N R in June. So these plan approved thirty percent design ended this year, sixty percent. Ninety percent for staff of next year. Submit the loan application. Plans and specs to T N R in June. Reparations and specs approved and advertise all twenty six. And then this would be you would be eligible for loan. Construction duration, I put eighteen to twenty four months. If the generators included, that'll probably increase the. Construction duration to closer to twenty four years. Substantial lead times of generators, electrical equipment to this. Almost year a year for some of the M C C components and other electrical years. So. That's why I put the range in there. If the generators included, it might be closer to eighteen months. It's not. There it is included or closer to twenty four. It's not.
Right. So where do we go from here? Are we going right into Lisa's thing then? Or are we? We're going right into Lisa then? Or what what's?
Uh, well, this is a separate motion. So this is just on the task order.
Just on the task order. Okay. All right.
They're pretty. Do you want to hire Strand to start this process?
Yeah. And I think I'm just, you know. And maybe it's because I wasn't here a lot the last time we talked about this, but I'm kind of. Just trying to figure out numbers here, right? So we've got on your sheet here, right? Your costs. Of five point one million. And now we're talking about seven point something. So where are we?
That's if you did all of the alternates exactly the way that they came in.
So the five point one is just taking all of the things in the bid. Or the the things that we said that we need to do.
So the five point six is based off of this body at the meeting that you were nabbed. So at the end of January, they talked about doing rankings one through four. And replacement of the mechanical screen, as you just learned, there's more cost to that.
Yeah.
Right than planned. And so you'll see that in the bid package, we actually scaled back even more so than what the direction you gave us. There's only three items in that base bid. And we'd be making sure that we do. That's the three point something number. That he had estimated and then everything else is an alternate. So again, that gives that flexibility to that board at the time to decide what they want to do and not do.
Right. I get that. So that's the three point two two zero is what we have. But then now this five point six seven, again, that's including this mechanical screen now of the one point some odd million. Correct? I'm just trying to figure out where these numbers are adding up to because we have three point two. Million ish for the first three base bid items. And you've got a number of five point six down here. So.
Yeah. So the five point six included the engineering. Remember this chart that you have from him does not include that. So it includes the one through four engineering. And the construction costs and then the previous number number for the mechanical screen that again, as we've learned is is comes in higher than that. So that's why it's not even included in that base bid. Because my guess is that taking apart a whole building is maybe not something that we want to do, you know, for a million plus dollars. So so that's how it's coming to those numbers. But again, the flexibility is going to be on that board to kind of pick and choose what they want to do. And that's advice. I I think the what's question that you might be getting at is that do we need to include all these bid alternates? Right? That's up to you guys. We're giving you that option if you want to include them. But based off of January's conversation, right? There might be some of these things like the generator, like the garage that you're like, you know what? We don't want to include them because we don't have an appetite to to spend money on those. Right? Mm hmm. Yep. Yep. And this would allow you to do that. Correct.
Well, and and I think that, you know, what my biggest takeaway from all this is if you look on at the design schedule and all this stuff. We're sitting here in twenty twenty five making decisions. For something that's not going to get completed until twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine possibly, right? I mean, my daughter's in sixth grade. She'll be in high school at that point. Right? So this is. You know, we have to remember that. While yes, we've been very critical of our board and boards before us. This is why we have to start these processes now, right? Because this is something that's going to keep going into the future. Some of the people that are running for the board this year won't even be on the board possibly when this is actually finished. So something to think about as we move forward here. So. All right. What questions, concerns do we have? Who would like to speak on anything? And we'll kind of start process from there.
Well, I'd like to base bid that accomplishes the things that. You might say absolutely have to get done. For the for us to keep our permit. And that's that's a couple of a delicious side of importance. There's not, the alternatives. Are to be put together in such a fashion that they'll become a menu.
Yes.
Okay. And a menu of the of the time. It can be, okay, well, we're going to be doing this next year and. This and that the following year and whatever.
Will be set up as a menu that at that time the bids are received. In a decision. You didn't go forward, but if you have that design, you can creep bid certain portion. You pull it out and say.
Yeah.
You have a design that puts together a different bid package. Three or four years later.
Yeah, because that design is already approved by, you know, the D and R.
Yeah.
We had all our approvals and everything. We still have a little over ten percent breathing.
That would.
They're mostly.
Oh, sorry. I don't want to interrupt, but how long are those D and R approvals good for? You know, on a site plan?
It's more than. Years.
Well, that's good.
Three years.
Okay.
But plans would be done. So we would just be resubmitting.
Yeah, we resubmit even by private simple letter. That you wouldn't have to be a full blown facility.
Right.
Well, this this sheet to one, two, three, four and seven. Are going to cost us, we're going to have to borrow about as much as we had originally planned to do all of this time. We just have to back off a little bit so that we're within our ability to borrow this much money and get that account. This is, this is a, is this a refund from the D and R? We paid and then they refund.
No, the ten percent, that's an instant forgiveness. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, yeah, we instantly get that ten percent discount. It's not like a reimbursement or anything like that.
Okay.
They forgive that amount of the loan right away.
Well, that will be the first time that we took out a one for five billion, five uh. Million dollars for that sewer plant.
Well, and again, I think, you know, clarify here, this is just the task order, right? So we're not, we're not taking out loans to do anything at the moment, right? We're just. We're asking them to start their work so that we can get bids to them. Right? Just out of a point of clarification.
My concern about borrowing that much money, and I know you're not doing that initially, but it's all the other moves that we borrowed for the. Island Street. Upgrading and then all the industrial park upgrading. So that's quite a bit of money that we we have to come up with. In this village sustain that.
Yeah. And I think. Again, I I don't want to sound like a a broken record here, but. We're not borrowing the money in to ask them to do what we're asking them to do, right? We're just asking them right now to get.
Right. And and I get that. Yes, the the upcoming. Debate is going to come up in the next resolution. So but I'm anticipating that.
Any other comments or questions from anybody?
We go forward with task order and we approve, you know, them to move forward with the the engineering costs. What happens if we decide not to move forward with all the components for the wastewater treatment plant? Are we still uncovered for over five hundred thousand dollars in design fees? Because it's done?
Yep. Yep.
At least we have the design for the future.
Yes, they have the product.
Is that in the budget then? Five hundred thousand?
Not yet.
Now we go on C I P here.
Um, yeah, we'd have to do some sort of, and I don't know what other communities do, and we'd probably have to talk with Lisa, but I would imagine we do some sort of. Short term borrowing or even borrow from ourselves, right? For that one year to tide us over. And then when you guys go out to bid for that full package, we just sense could pay ourselves back for that portion that we've allocated. But we got time to plan how we do that.
That's a good chunk to bite off. Any lessons there would not be getting done what we have to do. Alternates are alternates and we get to a point where looking opening bids. And we can always do all the alternates are out to life. But here's a little bit on the. The main project we worked at. I mean, we're very. We have a broad discretion as far as that goes. And we're not even told to that kind of stuff.
What else?
Uh. You tell them about yourself?
Yeah. I think that affects. Um, I think it's a way something. It doesn't affect me so much as if there's air of treatment plant who's operating to the plant and what it's having. Um, you know, equipment is, if you're a year of January presentation, we talked about some needs. Some of this equipment is forty five years old. And, um, you know, falling apart essentially. So if delays that, you know, right now it's it's. Two and a half years gone or anything you could get built. So it's just a push in that. For my standpoint, that's how I might have. And it's ready to go available in two.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? It's a pleasure, the board.
Going to make a motion to approve strand tax quarter twenty five dash oh one. Waste water treatment upgrade. Waste water treatment upgrade uh. Not with the siege and estimated freedom five hundred sixty nine thousand dollars.
That could be what?
Five hundred and sixty nine thousand five hundred.
It's an engineering cost.
It'd be a engineering cost, yes.
One second.
Are there any other questions or concerns by anybody on the on the body about that? If not, then I'm going to call the question. Um all those in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with one name. All right. Moving on to our. Next item is motion approved resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two or sewer rate increase.
All right, well, I gave my summary, but I believe Lisa with Ellers, are you on there?
I am.
Wonderful, well, I'll let you.
Can you, is it possible to turn that off so that we can hear? Yeah, it's just.
Yeah.
It's hard in general in this room.
Yeah, Lisa, just so you know, if you could kind of speak as loud and clear as you can so we can hear you.
Okay, is this okay?
So far, so good.
I would just uh invite everybody in the room to try to be as quiet as possible so that we can all hear what's going on. Go ahead, Lisa, thank you.
Okay, yes, I don't have a formal presentation this time. Um basically, I will just explain as the administrator did. That the changes in percentages are due to changes um using the twenty twenty five budget. As well as the change in the project total cost. Um so the numbers provided in the past, this is, we started back in September of twenty twenty four, so there was no twenty twenty five budget. Um but it's time has elapsed. We um. Have made those changes and then changes to the projects that uh you selected. So in the resolution, there are um a couple increases uh for approval. Just note that twenty twenty five is solely based on what you need um. To be sustainable for your twenty twenty five budget year. Additional increases would be needed, um and this is based off of the five point six seven million of project cost total. Um receiving a ten percent uh principal forgiveness and the loan closing November twenty twenty six. Um so payments would be started in twenty twenty seven. If that is no longer the case, these could be adjusted. Um just to note that your operating and maintenance costs are what is a large driver of these increases. You've seen a thirty one percent increase from your twenty twenty three budget to uh or twenty twenty three actual to twenty twenty five budget. Just from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, there's a seventeen percent increase in your operating and maintenance. Um as a reminder, when you issue revenue debt, your net revenues have to be at a dollar and ten cents. Uh per dollar of debt. However, most of your debt is the general obligation debt. So you need to make sure that your rates are sustainable to cover all obligations of the sewer utility. That is all I have unless there's additional questions.
So this is uh President Gurkey. I'm I'm just going to ask the general question. So. In our resolution that we have for us tonight, we have a twenty one point four six percent increase for twenty twenty five. That is to. Uh in essence, maintain our our current um sewer. Fund or sewer utility to be operating in the positive, correct?
Correct.
So without that increase, uh is there a general, is there a general idea of where we would be?
Um I don't have that calculated.
And I would just remind this body that when we passed the twenty twenty five budget, we passed it assuming at some point we would increase our revenues, right? We passed it. I'm just looking at our sheets with a twenty percent increase plan to rates and thus our expenses match that too. So part of what she's seeing is we anticipated this increase coming anyway.
And this is part of the budget that we passed as a board unanimously earlier uh or last.
Last year, yep. And just so I can touch on the resolution too, uh go way to look at this is that you're not binding a future board. I want to make sure that that's clear here. So. What if this passes tonight, you'd be setting our rates for this year so that twenty one point four six will go effective in April. And then in a sense, you're giving guidance to the next board, right? So after that, it says the twenty four percent in twenty twenty six. Well, you guys can pass that in a resolution. It doesn't mean that that's the case. It's not going to be the case until. Finance Committee reviews twenty twenty six budget, your really the village board at that time adopts that budget. Uh the president-elect lends, right? Make sure that he's in support of it, and all those people and conversations still need to happen. Um so just because you pass this resolution doesn't guarantee that rates are going to go up by that much uh next year. So. So don't feel the pressure that you're just burdening future boards.
Right.
Then the argument can be made, why don't we just let the future boards? Um vote on that then. Rather than us doing it.
Well, in essence, we will be, right? I mean, I I and I I kind of hear where you're coming from with that one, Kurt, because yeah, this is. You know, we could say that we're past, we could have thirteen different years in here with thirteen different percentage increases if we really wanted to, but they're not binding. Um until that budget is passed, right? So I I kind of understand what you're saying in that way, too. I think I also hear what what our administrator and what some other people on the board have said is that we want to give guidance to the next board saying, hey. This project really does need to be done. Not that we can dictate that, right? Because we won't be here, right? But um I I do wonder if if this is the what the place to put that number, if that makes sense.
I think the the where the prudence comes in is. Lisa or Ellers has already done the research. They've already done the numbers, and this is what the numbers look like right now.
Mm hmm.
If the world comes to an end or, you know, within the next twelve months, we have to reevaluate. But at least we have a jumping off line and a reference.
Mm hmm.
So that we don't have to re- you know, again.
Right.
So this is kind of. Documented in a way.
Yeah, I do.
But it's uneducated.
Got it. Anybody else want to jump in real quick?
Yes.
We're talking about talking about the twenty one percent. Is that affected by any great extent? With the uh production way down or non-existent at the guy on the plant?
I would say.
If you're losing water revenue and you would be losing sewer revenue because we have the water to age that line.
Yeah, correct. And that's such a new phenomenon that we don't, we don't know the effect of that, right? They could get a new buyer tomorrow and it could change. Yeah.
And in that case, I mean, we will have new buildings too going up, right? So there'll be increases in sewer usage as well. Can kind of go both ways with that, but I hear what you're saying.
We have no roadblocks in front of this that we are able to remove. At this point. We don't have a magic wand. Or or a crystal ball.
I mean, at the very least, we need to bring our sewer rates up so that we're functioning in the positive. Does it suck? Yes. Does it need to be done? Yes.
Were are we done with the elders part of this? Are we going to talk about the the motion?
I think that's, I think that's what we're.
We're talking about the motion right now because. I had, I had a few things to say is um about this. Um, I don't know, is this the type of message we want to send to our constituents? Going into this election, all right? They may not know about this now. Now, we got a few here. I got my neighbor uh Mary here. She's a widow and she's on a fixed income. Um is this the type of message we want to send to them? They may not realize this now that these rates are being jacked up. But they may realize two months from now, two or three months from now, and then they're going to be very mad. And I think this is a message we want to send uh to them. The other thing that that bothers me is is the legality of this. I think this is being rushed. We even, we haven't even gotten bids in yet. We haven't got three of the three bids, the minimum bids that we need. And. Let me present this question to you, uh Chris and and Dan. When have we had a public hearing on this? We've never really had a public hearing on this. Now, you may, you may, you know, you may say that, well, we've had. Uh entertain this this topic during uh topics of our meetings, but have we uh advertised this to the public? And tell told them, hey, this is what we're doing. We want this five point four million wastewater treatment plant project, and then. Rates are going to go up significantly. The the original way we had it would be seventy two point eight percent if we did it, you know, the original way we did over a three year period. So we never really presented it. To me, uh raising the rates is putting the cart before the horse. We should have gotten the bids in before this. And um I know we haven't got to the motion specifically yet, but. I move that we table this motion till after April first because I don't think. This is fair to the upcoming board. You know, that 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 they should be saddled with this. And and I think that I think it would be more prudent to take this more, uh take this slowly. I think we're just rushing into this and we need to take more time. And let the taxpayers know, hey, this is what's going on. So that they're informed, so they can say, well, you know. You know, maybe they want these uh. These these uh improvements to our wastewater treatment, but maybe they're favored it. But maybe they're not. Maybe they want and in the favor of these rates going up so significantly. I just don't think in and. I also know for a fact that it's been this board's policy. That we don't rush into major projects. One month before election. I'm I've heard of it two months before election. I've talked to past board members and. It, you know, they're, they've been advised, no, we're not going to do anything major until after. The election and these uh trustees and government officials are in place, so. I don't know if we're at the point in this juncture where we we can uh. Make a motion, but I I I think we should, I I make a motion that we table this till after April. Just to be fair.
Well, and that's what I'm kind of trying to figure out because.
Well, we would need a second and then we can debate it.
Okay, so. We do have a motion. That it's on the table right now. And the motion again, Kurt was to.
I say that we uh table. The uh rate increases. Until after the election, until we um. You know, perhaps we, I guess, I don't want to put the bids into the project, but. Well, I I think actually we should need, we should have bids before we even decide on a rating. Because we don't know how much this project is going to cost. I I just question the legality of this at this juncture.
Right, so I I don't know. And again, I, you know, I'm not, I guess, a legal expert, but I don't know that us voting or us. Taking a vote on raising sewer rates that we have already voted on for our budget of the twenty one percent or twenty percent from last year. I don't know that that's something that we.
That's the budget. We still have to vote on the increases.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're we're, we would be essentially voting on an increase for this he, for this year to enact this increase in sewer rates of twenty percent. We which, again, were budgeted for last year and passed by this board, right? So. I like I said, I I'm with you in the sense that I don't necessarily. I don't necessarily agree with the language of a twenty four percent increase in twenty twenty six in this overall resolution, only because it's not binding. It doesn't do anything other than put a placeholder in there. But even if it is passed with it in there. Okay, like you said, the next board can come in and say, yeah, well, just kidding, we're not going to do it.
What what do you mean it's not binding? Why would we vote on it if it's not binding?
Well, and that's what I'm saying. It's more of a guidance, right? But we can, we can say, yeah, we want to increase sewer rates in twenty twenty six. We could say we want to increase sewer rates in twenty ninety five. And, you know, so that's where I'm saying I don't know that that's necessarily a great spot to be putting it in there, but as far as legality, I mean, and and rushing this. This is something that came before us. I want to say it was in November, the first time it came before us saying, hey, that we're looking to do this. So I don't think that we're rushing into this and saying that we're doing it last second. On the, on the other thing, a past, past board member is saying it's been our policy in the past of not doing anything. I specifically remember other past board members that are no longer on this board saying, what can we get done before the next election? What do you want to get done as as you're coming in as an incoming president, right? So those same board members that may be advising you of one thing right now. Have been doing something differently.
And they were told that they couldn't do it when they asked that be done.
Tell what are you talking? What do you say?
You just said that past board members were asking if they could get anything done at that juncture. This was in January or February, and they were told that they couldn't do it.
That is not my recollection at all.
No, that's what, that's what the past board member told me.
Well, like, like I said, I think that.
I recommend.
We, we are a current board here and anything that's happened in the past that may or may not have, he said, she said, it is not appropriate and it's not. Part of us right now, right? I'm, I'm just saying, we are here, okay? This is what's presented before us. This is what we have to decide on, and quite frankly, no other past board member or anybody else other than this board gets to decide what's going on right now. So I understand.
Yeah, so you don't think that this is hasty, that this is something that should be decided on after April? I mean, I I mean.
A twenty one percent sewer rate increase? No, because we've already been discussing this since last year.
And it was twenty percent before.
Okay, so it's one point four per six, or one point four six percent more, and that's.
You don't think that's that's. You just say just one point four percent.
I understand. No, I know it can make a difference. It makes a difference for me. I would argue that I pay some of the highest sewer rates in in the village. I have a lot of water that I use. So yes, it does make a difference. And I want everybody to be clear on that. Any of these things that we pass. Every single one of us pays for these, right? It's not like we're just sticking it to somebody. But we've been, all been here a long time. We've seen the equipment that's been degraded. We've seen the things that are failing in this wastewater treatment plant. It's not like we can just say, oh, we don't want to do it because eventually we're going to have to do it. And I'm, again, as you look in this timeline, right? This is going down the road two, three, four years, and I'm not trying to argue with anybody. I'm just saying it's going down the road two, three, four years. We're not making the decision to spend all this money right now. We're going, wow, we really should probably do it. All we can control in this moment, literally before the April election, is raising those sewer rates to make it so that our sewer utility. Is operating positively.
And 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 I would say that I think we're just being hasty. I think you're just, I think people are just, well, we had to get this done. We had to get this done. I think. That we should take more time and let the board that's being elected decide this rather than. You know, something that I I don't think the constituents agree with.
You want to let the next board decide on so on a budget item that we passed last year and this one.
Budget item that we're designing, the budget item is decided, we're deciding to raise the rates.
Correct.
That's two different things.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
To meet the budget, to meet what we passed.
I guess, Dan, we're just going to have to agree to this.
I I that's totally fine. I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, kind of give you an idea.
Because we're going to go back and forth. I I just don't agree with this. I think that our our constituents, we need to be fair to them. And that's just not being fair.
Well, and that, I, you know, that is, it's it's not fair to any of us probably, right? Like, nobody wants to pay more. I don't want to pay more, but it is what it is. Um, I I am with you, like I said, though, that I don't know if I necessarily agree with the twenty four percent in twenty twenty six to be in that resolution.
So it might have been right in understanding that twenty one point.
Or six.
That is to uh. Her, Lisa and Ellers, that is to. Maintain our current costs. To meet.
Yeah, put it in the black, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to do a twenty one point six percent increase this year to. Maintain. What we need to do to keep the business running.
To Kurt's point, we don't have to pass a twenty one point four six, but if we don't.
Don't, and we are going to be in the red.
Correct.
Of our sewer.
And I'm, I'm looking at our treasurer shaking my head. Yes, correct?
Yes.
And based on what Chris said with the budget, I would say, yes. Does that put us in a further deficit for twenty twenty six then?
So if we didn't pass it, yeah.
Twenty one point four percent. Soon. Or at all, that twenty twenty six, we're going to have to go to thirty percent to recoup what we need. I'm making a.
Yeah.
Please bear with me, but.
That's what Brian from twenty percent to twenty one point four six.
Correct.
Is because we got nothing done since we talked about this at, uh, in, during last year.
So what if we just did the twenty one point four percent this year and amended it to that? And that's anything after that, then. Future boards could decide whatever we needed after that.
We can.
And e- either way, they can really, really all this number does, the twenty four percent. That it tells me, Chris, to plug that into twenty twenty six budget right now as a placeholder. And then when I meet with the finance committee end of summer, that's going to be the number, that's going to be the starting point, right? And then that body and a future board can decide what they want to do with that information.
This, this is not a budget item right now. We're voting on raising.
Correct. You say for twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I.
Boy, we're going, uh, we do have a motion on the table.
Oh, very true. Yes.
Um, are we? At what point do we declare dead due to?
Well, I haven't asked. Uh, I mean, do we have a second on the original motion? Anyone? Not then I will declare that original motion, uh, dead.
I make a motion to amend the ordinance for the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two. On the. Ninth, whereas. To. Eliminate. Anything past the twenty one point four six percent.
In twenty twenty five?
In twenty twenty five. Change that comma to a period and eliminate the rest of that.
Can we scroll down to be further?
Yep, then we'll amend the chart to remove those columns into.
Did you mention eleven eight?
Eight.
So do we, did we declare the motion yet? The, the full motion?
Declare it when?
Okay. What? Uh, where are you?
What are you talking about, eliminate?
Now, where, where did you get down the?
Which number? I'm sorry. Eleven eight.
I don't know what you're, so it has up in the. Oh, you're up in the, in the ordinance.
The resolution.
The resolution.
Yeah, yeah, we're in the resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two. So he's saying, or the motion, I believe, is the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, the ninth, whereas, uh, everything after. In twenty twenty five is to be, uh, struck. So there'll be a period at twenty twenty five. Everything else is struck. And then if I'm also saying this correctly, Rick, you can please, um, let me know if I'm wrong, but the final two columns in the next page. Uh, one, one twenty six and one, one twenty seven to also be struck and deleted.
Correct. So we're keeping the twenty one point four six.
For twenty five.
And that's it.
Correct. And.
Okay.
And we will. Let the next board determine what they would like to do.
So twenty twenty five would just be the, the, the only rate increase we're deciding on at the twenty one point four six percent?
That is correct. And, um, I do believe we have a second.
Just a second.
Is that, said your intention to second that motion with all the? All right. Are there any questions or concerns on that? All right, I'm going to call the question though. All those in favor?
Do you want to state the motion? So. Thirty one. Actually, you should just, you want to speak?
Voting on the amendment to the, to the resolution.
Now the clerk read off the.
Sure. Yeah.
Here we go. Okay. Motion to amend the ninth, whereas to strike anything after twenty one point four six. Period. And remove.
In twenty.
In twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty five, in after twenty. Twenty five and remove twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven from the charts. Correct. So just to clarify, that was a, a motion to amend the resolution. That was not a motion to approve the.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry.
Amendment first.
Yes. Good call on it.
It's a good compromise. I, I think that's a better compromise.
All right. So will that, so that is the motion to amend the resolution.
Okay.
This, okay, we said the motion, we have a second, so I will call that then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion on the amendment carries. All right, um, now I'm going to make, I'm looking for a motion to approve that amended resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two as amended.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second and a third.
Yeah.
You don't mind.
That one.
Kurt's got that one.
Come a long way.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right, next we have correspondence from the mid, mid, mid Marine municipal association. Uh, the next legislative committee, committee meeting, it looks like is March twelfth, seven P M. Um, I think we want to talk about with that, it looks like that something about parades, right? Parade and festival safety is going to be the program.
Yeah, Seaguard and Tricia and Jackson officials that are going to be. Giving an explanation of what the best practices are for that.
So, so invite anybody that's invested in parades to possibly attend.
Yeah, regional meeting, you're very welcome. Public is welcome.
Good notes if I can't make it.
Right. All right, uh, any items for future consideration by the village board? Hearing none, I believe that we are in order to adjourn.
Motion, make motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight seventeen. You're out of here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa.